Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 1,192nd Regular Meeting and Public Hearing of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in our audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda, which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the City Council, and the City Council, after holding their own public hearing, will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission holds the only public hearings for requests for preliminary plaits and/or vacating petitions. The Commission's recommendation is forwarded to the City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petitioner requesting a waiver of use or site plan is denied tonight, the petitioner will have seven days, excuse me, have ten days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. Staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of proceedings tonight. If our secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. Smiley.
Present.
Ms. DeNaro.
Present.
Mr. Bonjero. Here. Mr. Long.
Is here.
Mr. Ventura is not here. Karen Magno is here. Chairman Wilshaw.
Is here. And also with us tonight, we have Mark Toramina and Stephanie Reese from our Planning Department. For our folks in the audience, the format of our meeting is that we will read each of the items that are on the agenda. Our planning staff will give background information on those agenda items for our commissioning to get us started on each item. We'll then have an opportunity for the petitioner to come forward and speak to their item. We may have some questions for them. And then if there's anyone else in our audience wishing to speak for or against a petition, we'll have an opportunity for them to speak as well before we make our decision. And with that, if our secretary is ready, we're going to start with item number one on the public hearing section of our agenda.
Petition 2022-09-02-19 submitted by Great Lakes Veterinary Behavior Consultants, P L L C, requesting waiver use approval pursuant to Section 6.59 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance as amended to operate a veterinary clinic at 20337 through 20339 Farmington Road, located on the west side of Farmington Road between Norfolk Avenue and Eight Mile Road in the northeast quarter of Section 4.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is a waiver use request under Section 6.59 to operate a veterinary clinic. The site is located on the west side of Farmington. It's about 500 feet south of Eight Mile Road within an existing multi-unit office complex that is called The Medical Plaza. This complex consists of six buildings under a condominium form of ownership. There's shared access and parking for all six buildings. The zoning is C1, local business. The overall site measures about 363 feet of frontage along Farmington Road by a depth of 600 feet comprising approximately five acres. Scott Colburn Western Ware Store is located immediately to the north. To the west is the newly constructed Provision Living of Livonia Senior Assisted Living Facility. That's Zone C2, as well as on the pond condominiums, Zone Multifamily. And then to the south is a cluster site condominium known as Capri Court. The proposed veterinary clinic would occupy the east half of Unit 2, which is also referred to as Building B. Unit 2 is the second building on the right as you enter the complex along the north side of the property. Great Lakes is not a traditional veterinary clinic in terms of offering surgical or other medical treatments or services. Instead, it specializes in treating animal behavioral issues such as separation anxiety and aggression. The facility would be designed to handle roughly five to six pet patients at a time. No animals would be boarded overnight, and there would be no pet daycare services provided. Office hours, as was discussed at the study meeting, would be between 8:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday. The interior of the practice would be divided into several spaces, including behavioral treatment and consultation rooms, private offices. There's a reception area, restrooms, utility and storage, as well as an employee break room. The outdoor area for pets to get relief is now in the northwest corner of the complex. This is adjacent to the dumpster. And unlike the original area that was to be used for this purpose, the boundary of the property in the northwest corner is currently fenced, which should prevent trespassing. As you recall from our discussion at the study meeting, originally it was shown just to the east and north of the suite where the practice would be located, but because there was no dividing line or boundary separating the two properties, I was concerned about trespassing. So she's moved that to the northwest corner. She's provided some additional information, I think that was submitted to the Commission that she'll be able to talk about in a few minutes. There is a special requirement under Section 6.59 relative to soundproofing, but according to the petitioner, this should not be an issue since the way the floor plan is arranged, and you can see here, no pets would be in rooms immediately adjacent to the adjoining business. Parking is determined at a ratio of one space for every 200 square feet of usable floor area. As I mentioned previously, access and parking are shared between the buildings, and there should be no problem with the limited use of this facility and the amount of parking available. We do not see that as being an issue at all. There are no other site changes or improvements proposed to the building. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to read out the correspondence.
Please.
First letter is from our Engineering Division dated September 26, and it reads, "The existing parcel is currently serviced by Public Water Main, Sanitary Sewer, and Storm Sewer, and no alterations to the existing services are planned, so we do not believe there will be any impacts to the existing systems." A letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next is a letter of no objection from the Department of Public Safety, Livonia Fire and Rescue. That letter is dated October 4th and signed by Brian Cookla, Fire Marshal for the city. Similar letter of no objection coming from the Department of Public Safety, Division of Police, dated September 27th and signed by Scott Chapansky, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. Letter of no objection from the Inspection Department dated October 18th, signed by Jerome Hanna, Director of Inspection. Letter of no objection from the Department of Finance dated September 29th and signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. And lastly, a letter of no objection from the Office of the Treasurer dated September 26th and signed by Linda Shield, Treasurer of the City.
That was easy. All right. Is there any questions for our planning staff? Mark, I did have one question. You mentioned that there was potentially the requirement for soundproofing between this suite and another one, but we believe it's been mitigated. If for some reason the sound is not mitigated by the design of this suite, and the other tenant were to potentially complain to the city about it, would those soundproofing requirements then kick in?
Yeah, I would say that first course of action, I would think, would be with the landlord, and I believe maybe the landlord, I'm not sure if they're present or not, but if that's not taken care of, and a complaint did come to the city, then that is something we'd have to have addressed. That's correct.
Okay.
How that would be handled, I really don't know. Probably additional sound barriers along the west side of that unit, but I don't know what that would look like. If it would be through the, maybe it would be through the ventilation system that would create the biggest issue. I'm not sure.
Right, right. Or even maybe some sort of foam padding or something in the room to absorb some of the noise. Whatever. Okay. Well, thank you. I just wanted to know about that. Is our petitioner here for this item? Feel free to come forward to our podium, and we'll ask that you introduce yourself, your name and address for our record, and it can be a business address, and then we'll ask you if there's any questions.
Okay. So this, I am Kari Kraus, and the address is actually still under my home address in Canton. And because I do rent space from multiple locations right now, so that made the most sense.
Okay. And what else would you like to tell us about your business before we get into any questioning?
Well, I know Mr. Toramina read and summarized my scope of business very nicely. Thank you very much.
He feels a lot of thunder.
And so that is one of the reasons that I did prepare that scope of practice, was so that anyone who needed to know would have the information that this is not your general practice, primary care, veterinary clinic, and so it's much different. And it definitely serves a big purpose, since of course, if you don't know, behavior issues are extremely common in pets. And so we definitely know that the more we can help them and help them to be good members of the community, and it also helps their owners to also live harmoniously in the community as well. And so I just do behavioral medicine. I sort of describe it to be a combination of psychiatry and social work, because that's really what is involved. It's both what is going on in the brain of the animal, as well as, of course, helping the owners of the animal help that animal to the best of their ability. I don't know if there's anything else anyone would like to know?
Well, did you want to address the bathroom area, since that was kind of a big topic of conversation or study meeting?
Absolutely. Hopefully, you received from Scott Miller photographs of the revised or alternative pet bathroom area, which is, I mean, there are, I guess, a few different options, but there is a 28 by 28-foot area just to the west of the dumpster in the northwest corner of the property. And it is all stones. There are some trees there and some big boulders, probably to keep cars from plowing into the fence, I would assume, but that, that, that area is very nicely set up and fully enclosed on both the north side and the west side by a solid wooden fence that runs all the way to the west side of Building B. So it definitely appeared to be, after I talked with my landlord, a much better option. Thank you very much for making suggestions about what you would be looking for as far as the pet bathroom area. Is there anything else you need to know about that area?
I think that covers it. We'll see if there's any other questions from any of our commissioners, and we'll go from there. Any of our commissioners have questions for our petitioners? Karen, Ms. Smiley.
Are you currently doing this somewhere else?
Yes. I rent space in Plymouth, and I also rent space from a veterinary clinic in Jackson, Michigan. That's where I came from today, actually.
So this will be your primary place, though, once you start this business?
Absolutely. It'll be my sole location.
And how will you get clients?
Thankfully, I already have a very, very established, well-established referral network from primary care veterinarians in the, really in the whole metro Detroit area. And so 90% of my referred clients and their pets, patients, are referred by their primary care veterinarian, and so I have, gosh, dozens and dozens of referring veterinarians in Livonia, Westland, Canton, Plymouth, Northville, Belleville, Ypsilanti, Ann Arbor, even Down River. So it's, one thing that was very nice about this Livonia location was it was so accessible from so many different locations that I already get referrals from.
Okay. And this is, I'm just curious, how long this behavior modification for the animal and the owner, how long would sessions last?
Like a typical appointment would last one to two hours.
Okay. And then they, you can't do it in one appointment, I'm not sure.
No. Right. So right now, the total amount of time that we meet in person with the pet owner and their pet to start with over a six-month period is six hours split over multiple sessions. So yes, absolutely. Behavior does not get modified overnight.
And then one last question. Would you be the only employee there?
I do have a Karen Pryor Academy Certified Training Partner, so she is a very highly educated dog trainer, who is right now, until we get into a lease space, doubling as my customer service representative as well. But as soon as we can get established, there would be an additional employee who would serve as the customer service representative. And then, of course, as we continue to be able to service more pets and owners than what we can do in the very limited time and day rental arrangement that we have right now, we would absolutely, I would have additional trainer employees, at least one, maybe two. I might even have up to five or six employees. That's probably the max that that space and that sort of scheduling would allow.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Any other questions for our petitioner? I don't see any other questions from our commissioners. Is there anyone in our audience wishing to speak for or against this item? I don't see anyone in our audience coming forward. Is there anything else that you would like to add, Ms. Kraus, before we make our decision?
No. I just want to thank you for considering this petition.
Well, thank you. We appreciate you coming forward, and if there's no further questions or comments from any of our commissioners, I will close the public hearing, and a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Smiley.
I'd like to make an approving resolution that this request to operate a veterinarian clinic at 20337 to 20339 Farmington Road shall be approved subject to the following condition: that the operation of the subject use shall not include the overnight boarding of or care of animals; that all waste shall be properly disposed of in that area we talked about; that adequate soundproofing shall be installed to the extent necessary to ensure the elimination of all noise from the units; that the use of open or outdoor runways, kennels, or pens are prohibited; that the northwest corner of the property adjacent to the dumpsters be used as a designated outdoor pet rest area; that only conforming signage is approved with this petition, and that any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals; that no LED light band or exposed neon shall be permitted on this site, including but not limited to the building or around the windows. And pursuant to Section 13.13 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance as amended, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of the approval by City Council, and unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Okay. Is there support for that motion?
Support.
I heard Mr., I guess we'll go with Mr. Karen Magno on that one. I heard it from multiple sources. So we have a motion to approve offered by Mrs. Smiley, supported by Mr. Karen Magno. Is there any discussion on that motion? If there's no discussion, if the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. Smiley.
Aye.
Karen Magno says aye. Mrs. DeNaro.
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Chairman Wilshaw.
Votes aye. Motion passes. We'll go to City Council with an approving recommendation. We wish you luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. Well, that ends the public hearing section of our agenda. That was the only item for that section. Now we move on to miscellaneous section of our agenda, item number two.
Item number two is petition 2022-08-08-04 submitted by Future Land Holdings, LLC, requesting approval of all plans required by Sections 3.13 and 13.13 of Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance as amended in connection with a proposal to redevelop the site, including demolishing the existing commercial building and constructing a new 26,000-square-foot commercial building for the purpose of operating a Ducati and BMW motorcycle dealership at 19265 Victor Parkway, located on the west side of Victor Parkway between Seven Mile Road and Pembroke Avenue in the southeast quarter of Section 6.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina.
Thank you. Again, this request involves the redevelopment of the former Doc's Sports Retreat Restaurant located on Victor Parkway just north of Seven Mile Road. Development of the original restaurant, which was Cantina Del Rio, was done in the early 1990s. Under this proposal of the restaurant building, which is about 14,500 square feet, would be demolished and replaced with a new 26,000-square-foot building that would house two motorcycle dealerships, Ducati and BMW Motorrad. Motorcycle sales, service, and repair establishments are treated as a permitted use in the C4 district. The subject property is 3.21 acres in size. It has 193 feet of frontage along Victor Parkway, as well as approximately 300 feet of frontage along the I-275-96 expressway. The property, as shown on this map, is Zone C4, high-rise commercial. It was in June of 2019 that the site was rezoned to C4 for the development of a new six-story dual-brandet hotel, including Marriott's Aloft and Element, but then the project never got off the ground due to the impacts that COVID had on the hospitality industry. To improve the visibility from the expressway, the new dealership building would be positioned closer to the expressway, is at the west end of the property, and parking would be available on the north, south, and west sides. The overall length of the building is about 232 feet. The placement and size of the building complies with all required yard regulations. The existing driveway on Victor Parkway would be, or would remain in its current location. Secondary access is available from the adjacent commercial parcel to the north via cross-access agreement that has been in place for many years. And then upon demolition of the former restaurant building, the easterly part of the site adjacent to Victor Parkway would be reserved for future development. So let me just familiarize everyone with this plan. So you can see the site is somewhat irregular shaped. The frontage along the expressway is here on the left-hand side of the plan. The right-hand side is where Victor Parkway is located. Going to the existing conditions survey, this is the existing restaurant building that would be demolished. The proposed site plan shows the location of the new building. As I said, this is on the west end of the property, closer to the highway. This area here, which contains the existing building, would be reserved for future development. The building itself is about 230 feet in length, and as you can see, the gray area around the building shows the location of the parking that would serve the motorcycle dealerships. It includes the west side, as well as the north and west side, excuse me, the west, south, and north sides of the building. The ground floor plan shows the layout of the combined facility. I'll go to that next. The north half would be the Ducati dealership, whereas the south half would be the BMW dealership. The two dealerships would each have separate entrances, showrooms, service areas, offices, and restrooms. There are shared areas within the facilities. This would include the parts room, a lunchroom, as well as a conference room, and some of the other utility services. There is also a second-floor mezzanine that would be located above the service areas of both of the dealerships. This mezzanine would be accessible via an elevator that would be located on the Ducati side of the building. There are also two stairwells on either side of the building that would provide access to the mezzanine. The upper-level mezzanine would be used mostly for storage, but would also have two showrooms with windows at either end that would be visible from the expressway. And when we get to the renderings, I'll show you what that looks like. Required parking is based on the size of the showrooms, as well as the service areas. Altogether, the two dealerships would require 70 parking spaces, 47 for the showrooms, and 23 for the service areas. The site plan shows a total of 89 spaces available. So when you look at this plan, the number of parking spaces immediately adjacent to this building totals 89. In addition, 71 spaces are available through that cross-access agreement with the adjacent parcel. This brings the total up to 160. And also, there's another 18 spaces that would be retained in the existing parking lot, which is adjacent to Victor Parkway. However, these spaces were not calculated in parking needs of the proposed motorcycle dealership. The trash dumpster is shown roughly in this location on the west side of the building. The details show six-foot-high poured concrete screen walls with simulated brick pattern. The plan also shows wood gates, which will have to be substituted with either metal or composite panels. Stormwater for the development would be managed within the existing detention pond, which is located on the parcel immediately to the south of the dealership property. And going back to the area, you can see where this parcel sits in relationship to this large stormwater detention basin, which is not only for this site, but for several of the sites within the Victor Corporate Park. In terms of landscaping, the plan meets all the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And looking at the design of the building, these are the flat drawings. I'll just show those quickly and then go to the renderings. But this, the interior, or excuse me, the exterior finish incorporates a mix of both prefinished insulated metal panels, full brick of veneer, insulated glass, and aluminum frames, as well as concrete masonry units or CMU, and a prefinished aluminum coping. The overall height of the building is shown at 30 feet, and all of the mechanical units would be concealed. So that's kind of difficult to see. This is actually, really gives you an idea of what the new building would look like. This is a view from the parking lot, looking at the entrances into the two dealerships, the Ducati being the red on the right, the BMW being the blue and black on the left. You can see each has complete separate identity and entrances. Shows too all of the insulated glass along the front of both of the dealerships or the glazing. This is all metal panel. There is a part here between the two, which is the full-faced brick material. Here's a rendering showing it from another angle along the front of the building, the same view, but on the opposite side, showing the Ducati dealership in the foreground and the BMW in the background. Here's a view of the building, looking slightly above, a view, this is the exterior facing the expressway. Again, this is all metal panels. The CMU is shown here, really would not be visible. These are where the two service entrances are located. So these are the two overhead doors. Here's a view, an attempted view, I will say, of the dealership really from the expressway. It probably does not show the extent of vegetation, and this is really from the, I believe, the entrance ramp leading to the expressway is the view that you would get actually from the expressway. It would probably be a little bit more concealed than what this, what this view actually shows. Lastly, we did receive a photometric plan for the, for the property. All of the light standards are limited to a height of 20 feet and would be shielded appropriately, or they would be downward-facing, full cutoff fixtures, which complies with our lighting policy.
So with that, Mr. Chairman, I can read out the correspondence?
Yes, please.
First is a letter from our Engineering Division dated October 7th. That reads, "The existing parcel is currently serviced by Public Water Main, Sanitary Sewer, and Storm Sewer, and the proposed project indicates that development will be utilizing the existing utilities as much as possible, so we do not believe there will be any impacts to the existing systems. Storm sewer detention has previously been provided for the site by the overall Victor Parkway development. The owner will need to submit drawings to this department to determine permit requirements based on final engineering drawings once approval of the project has been obtained. Also, it should be noted that any work within the I-275 right-of-way, the owner will need, will be required to obtain permits from the Michigan Department of Transportation." That letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next is a letter from our Department of Public Safety, Livonia Fire and Rescue, dated October 6th. That reads, "We have no objections to this proposal with the following stipulations: considerations for fire suppression and fire alarm systems, and a further detailed plan review will take place when this division receives an official plan set." That letter is signed by Brian Cookla, Fire Marshal. Next is a letter from the Division of Police dated October 10th, indicating no objections to the proposal. That letter is signed by Scott Chapansky, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. A letter from the Inspection Department dated October 18th that reads, "Pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed, and the following is noted: signage has not been reviewed. All signage shall conform to the ordinance. Variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals would be required for any non-conforming signage. This department has no further objections to this petition." That letter is signed by Jerome Hanna, Director of Inspection. Letter of no objection from our Department of Finance, noting that there are no outstanding amounts receivable, general or water and sewer. So they have no objections. That letter is signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. And a similar letter of no objection coming from the Office of Treasurer dated October 7th and signed by Linda Shield, Treasurer of the City. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Any questions for our planning staff? I don't see any questions, so we will go to our petitioner, who's in our audience. You're welcome to come forward to our podium. Good evening. Whoever wants to start can start with your name and Whoever wants to start can start with your name and address, please.
I'll start.
Jason Ann Standing, Pocono Construction Company, 2850 Trayburn Lane, West Bloomfield, Michigan.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Charlie Noel, excuse me, Charlie Noel. Current address of the Ducati dealership is 33828 Woodward Avenue, Birmingham, Michigan, and the current address of the BMW dealership is 14855 Sheldon Road, Plymouth, Michigan, 48170, and I am the owner-to-be, hopefully.
Thank you, Mr. Noel.
I'm Andrew Mosey. Mosey Gordon, Associate Architects, 4351 Delamere Court, Royal Oak.
Thank you, sir. All right, who would like to start and tell us about your business?
Be happy to start. So I think we had a really great planning session where we answered a lot of questions, and I think today was the, we brought back the takeaways we took from that meeting, which, you know, the photometric and the isometric from I-275, which I think we've clarified a few things on. And I think there was a few things brought up that I know that Charlie wants to talk to, that we want to make sure that you guys are assured of, and we've brought some additional information for you as well.
That'll be excellent. Thank you. Mr. Noel?
Yes, sir. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend the meeting as I was called away for business, but I understand there were some concerns, and I'm happy to answer whatever they may be.
Okay. We'll see what kind of questions we have for you when we get to that.
Great.
Is there anything else that you guys would like to present before we go to questions?
I don't think so.
All right. Sounds great. Is there any questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bonjero.
Just one question. So you're gonna, you're gonna move the existing businesses to this location, or you keep?
Yes. Yes. So both, the whole idea behind this is to build a facility. It would actually be the largest BMW Motorrad dealership in the United States, as well as the largest Ducati dealership in the United States right now. Both locations would cease to operate, both in Birmingham and Plymouth, to become basically the home in Livonia.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Smiley?
Yes, good evening. What would your hours of operation be in these? This is strictly motorcycles. There's no BMW cars or anything else, right?
Correct, yes. This is simply motorrad or motorcycles, as we like to call it. Hours of operations would adhere to state guidelines for automotive-related purposes. We open, we are currently open in peak season between 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Saturdays, when we are currently closed on Sundays. In winter hours, which we're fastly approaching unfortunately, we close on Sundays and Mondays.
Okay, and then where am I gonna test drive my new bike?
Well, providing, providing we can get you on one. The, the, so this was a question that was asked at both the Plymouth Township as well as Birmingham, when I opened both stores. And the simple answer is that we provide a guided route to every single client that chooses to elect to sign our waiver of liability. We provide them the route that we, you know, recommend ultimately. And the idea route that we put in place is there's actually two. One, for new riders that don't want to attend, that don't want to go on the freeway, we have no freeway route. My intention is to get you out of Victor Parkway as quickly as possible. So, and leaving the proposed site, we would have you exit or take a right on Victor Parkway. Then, my proposed route currently states that you would take a right going westbound on Seven Mile Road over to, excuse me, over to Northville Road. From there, you would go southbound until you hit essentially Heinz Park, taking that over to Schoolcraft Service Drive. And then this is where it can differentiate. You can either choose to go northbound on Newburgh, all the way back up to Seven Mile, and then pull back into our facility down Victor Parkway. If you elect to go down to the highway route, from the Schoolcraft Service Drive, you would go over 96, then back down through on and merge onto 96, which of course leads on to 275 northbound. Take that up to Seven Mile, exit on the eastbound side of Seven Mile Ramp, and then your first left into Victor Parkway.
Okay, and I assume that in order to, for you to offer a test drive, they have, they know how to operate, or they have an endorsement?
Yes. Per Michigan law, they actually have to show a, we have to have them sign a liability waiver, first of all. And secondly, yes, they have to have a motorcycle helmet, they have to have proper safety gear, and they have to have a Michigan motorcycle safety endorsement.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kermag.
I had a question about the lighting on the outside, excuse me, upstairs display windows, where you're gonna display the bikes that you can see basically from the freeway. Is there, I don't recall the answer. Is there, is that gonna be lit all night long?
I would think that we would try to have that lit as long as possible, yeah, for sure.
And about how many motorcycles will you be able to put up there in each window?
I mean, our intention is probably about three. The really, the idea behind, excuse me, the idea behind these upper facility semi-showrooms, so to speak, we're never gonna have customers up there. They're simply just decorative showrooms to, one, differentiate us, to your point, that people think that we're a motorcycle dealership, that we're not a BMW car dealership. I really want to avoid BMW cars coming in thinking they're gonna get an oil change from us as much as possible. Secondly, just to add some pizzazz to the building from both the northbound and southbound lanes of 275.
I think it looks good. How many employees will we have here?
Currently, between both stores, I have a total of 27, including myself. We are going from approximately a total of 30,000 square feet between both stores to, you know, a similar size, but it's a, it's a building designed for motorcycle uses where my current building is, one was a flower shop and one was actually an existing Buick dealership. So we're designing this building to accommodate motorcycle use only, so my, my headcount will probably increase by about 10 people.
That's good.
So I'm timing, I'm thinking about 35 to 36 people.
That's good. The names you have on the building on the left, left-hand side, the BMW Motorrad, is that a, is that the name specific to your dealership?
It is not.
It is not.
The current dealership name is BMW Motorcycles of Southeast Michigan.
Okay.
Located in Plymouth. We are working to revise that name. We are working with Motorrad North America to figure out which name would be admissible to them. We're thinking possibly Motor City, something, something tying, obviously, the roots of Detroit back into the, the brand name, because, one, BMW Motorcycles of Southeast Michigan is very long on the tongue, and a lot of people, when you tell them where you're located, they're like, where is that? Obviously, it's in Southeast Michigan, but it's a pretty large area. So we're trying to differentiate it. They will not allow us to use the name Livonia in the masthead, unfortunately. But, so, we're, we're gonna be either using the name that's existing, which is BMW MC of SEM or Southeast Michigan, and Ducati Detroit would remain Ducati Detroit.
So Ducati will use the Detroit, but you can't use Livonia?
Correct. Yes. And unfortunately, there is a BMW Detroit, or else I'd be, you know, pulling teeth to get that name already, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kermag. Now, any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Smiley.
What kind of security precautions are you taking? This is a very nice dealership.
Well, I mean, obviously, we, we will have a anti-theft system and surveillance system on premises. I don't plan on having anything further than that. In the nine years that I've been in Birmingham with, you know, one of the highest-line motorcycle brands probably in the world, I've never once had a theft issue, I've never once had a break-in issue, and that's directly on Woodward Avenue, which is, you know, an extremely heavy traffic area. But thankfully, we've never had once an issue, and I hope that continues.
Great. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Any other questions for our petitioner? Mr. Long?
It piqued my interest. Why won't they let you use the name Livonia? Is it based on population size, or?
It's a German thing. So that, that's why we can't even say motorcycles, we have to say BMW Motorrad.
Motorrad?
So, yeah.
All right. I just, made me curious. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome, Mr. Long.
If I could too, I just want to answer one other question. With the fire marshals review, the building is planned to be suppressed.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions for our petitioner? Just, just one from me. You, you are planning on probably having some events or activities on-site as well, special activities? Would those be on occasion, that you would have people come in for particular events, or maybe new model releases, things like that?
We do, yes. I mean, we plan on having events on a regular basis between both brands and co-branded events as well.
Okay. How about any training, motorcycle rider training?
You know, we, we've done a very good job partnering with Schoolcraft Community College, who offers the Motorcycle Safety Foundation. So, you know, them being directly across the street from us is really just a feather in our cap, that we have the ability to offer those services on such a local basis. So our intention is to not offer, first of all, we don't have the parking lot facility to accommodate any type of onsite training like that. And quite frankly, the Michigan State, the Michigan Safety Foundation does such a fantastic job that we really, we try to push as many, you know, non-endorse enthusiasts that direction in the hopes that they come back and source us for their motorcycle needs.
Okay, excellent. That's good. That's good. I think this is a good start. If there's any, if there's no other questions from any of our commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Long.
Mark, in the study session, we talked about how the portion of the parcel being held for future development would likely be hydro-seated. Is that correct still? Because I know in our approving resolution, we, we, we call for sod instead of hydro-seeding?
Yeah, we included the standard language in the, in the prepared resolution. That can be altered. It's a fairly large area. I think the point at the study session was if, if things turn around quickly and, and there's a development proposal beginning to be planned for that site, then we'd probably just have it hydro-seated. But otherwise, if it's gonna sit for a long time, the preference would be that it be maintained properly with irrigation and sod.
Okay, so can we throw that one to the discretion of the Planning Department, or the Inspection Department, or who?
Yeah, we can, we can prepare the language. We can alter it in a, in a way that addresses that, that timing issue.
Sounds good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Long. Anything else from any of our commissioners? Is there anyone in our audience wishing to speak for or against this petition? I don't see anybody else jumping up. We'll give you guys the last word. Thank you for coming. Is there anything else you'd like to add before we make our decision?
Not for me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
All right. Great. If there's no other comments or questions at this point, I will ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Long.
I'd like to offer an approving resolution that the request to develop Ducati and BMW Motorrad motorcycle dealerships at 19265 Victor Parkway is hereby approved, subject to city council approval and the following conditions. Number one, that the general site plan identified as sheet number SP2 dated October 5, 2022, as revised, prepared by NOAA and FROZES engineers, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number two, parking spaces shall be double-stripped at 10 feet wide by 20 feet in length. Number three, that the landscape plan identified as sheet number L2 dated October 3, 2022, prepared by NOAA and FROZES engineers, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number four, that all disturbed lawn areas, including road rights of way, shall be sodded in lieu of hydro-seeding, or, or, or shall be sodded, or shall be, I guess, covered to the, to the, to the satisfaction of the Planning Department or the Inspection Department, or something along those lines. Mark will clean that up. Number five, that underground sprinklers are to be provided for all landscaped and sodded areas, and all planted materials shall be installed to the satisfaction of the Inspection Department, and thereafter permanently maintained in a healthy condition. Number six, the elevations plan identified as sheet number A3 dated October 4, 2022, as revised, prepared by MGA architect designers, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number seven, that all rooftop mechanical equipment shall be concealed from public view on all sides by screening that shall be of, of a compatible character, material, and color to other exterior materials on the building. Number eight, that the three walls of the trash dumpster area shall be constructed out of building materials that shall complement that of the building. The enclosure gate, closure gates shall be of solid steel, solid panel steel construction or durable, long-lasting solid panel fiberglass. Number nine, that all exterior light fixtures shall not exceed 20 feet in height, and shall be aimed and shielded to minimize stray light trespassing across property lines and glaring into the adjacent roadway. Number 10, that except for what may be authorized under the zoning ordinance as part of a temporary sales event, any type of exterior advertising related to the sale of vehicles designed to attract the attention of passing motorists, such as promotional flags or streamers, shall be prohibited. Number 11, that there shall be no outdoor storage of vehicle parts, equipment, scrap material, waste petroleum, products junked, unlicensed, or inoperable vehicles, or similar items in connection with this operation, and that the overhead doors, when not in use for vehicles entering or exiting the service facility, shall be closed at all times. Number 12, that only conforming signage is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the zoning board of appeals. Number 13, that no LED light band or exposed neon shall be permitted on this site, including but not limited to the building or around the windows. Number 14, that the specific plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the inspection department at the time the building permits are applied for. And number 15, pursuant to section 13 dot 13 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by city council, and unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Is there support?
Support.
All right. We have a motion to approve made by Mr. Long and supported by Mr. Bonjero. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, if the secretary's ready, please call a roll.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero?
Aye.
Mrs. Smiley?
Aye.
Mrs. Darrow?
Aye.
Karen Magna votes aye. Chair Wolschow?
Votes aye. Motion passes, and we'll go to city council with an approving recommendation. We wish you luck. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, can we ask real quick? What's your timeline? When are you thinking of doing this? Hoping to do this?
When?
When, yes.
We have, we're meeting tomorrow to discuss finalizing plans.
Right.
For the architecturals.
Excellent.
Great.
Good luck, guys.
Good luck. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, we now move on to item number three on our agenda.
Petition 2022-09-08-05, submitted by Plymouth Armory LLC. Requesting approval of all plans required by sections 3.10 and 13.13 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance as amended regarding a proposal constructed in addition to the existing building at 27492 Five Mile Road, located on the north side of Five Mile Road between Inkster Road and Foshe Avenue in the southeast quarter of section 13.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you. This item involves the expansion of an existing commercial building that is located at the northeast corner of Five Mile and Foshe Street, which is just west of Inkster Road. The business is called Plymouth Armory, which specializes in selling firearms and accessories. The property measures 92 feet in width by 162 feet, for a total area of approximately one-third of an acre. The site, as you can see here, is comprised of two zoning classifications. The south, 122 feet is owned C1 local business, and the north, 40 feet is owned P parking. The existing one-story commercial building on the property measures 1,280 square feet, and as you can see, is positioned near the east side of the property. Parking is available on the west and north sides of the building, but mostly on the west side. The proposed one-story addition is proposed on the north side of the building on that portion of the site that is currently zoned C1. The addition measures 468 square feet, so upon completion, this would increase the gross floor area of the building to approximately 1,750 square feet. The footings and slab have already been built, which is in a violation of the building code and zoning ordinance. After the fact, inspections by the city's inspection department will require exposing the footings to verify compliance with the minimum required construction standards. However, the location and size of the addition appears to meet all required yard regulations. The existing building, and I'll go back to this photo, as you can see, is mostly brick. It has a peaked asphalt shingled roof. The addition itself would consist of split-block masonry. It would also have a peaked asphalt shegel roof. The height of the addition is slightly below the height of the existing building, so it would not be visible from Five Mile Road. The addition would be utilized primarily as a shop and receiving area. There is an overhead door, as well as a separate entrance that would be provided on the west side, and I believe this next- side, and I believe this next, this, so looking at it, and this is mismarked, I think we pointed that out at the study meeting, this is actually the west elevation. So, this is looking at the building from the west side. You can see the overhead door, as well as the other entrance door. This is the south elevation. Along the front of the building, the plans do show that the existing window openings, four in total, would be infilled with split face block. At the study meeting, the commission did express concern regarding the appearance from Five Mile Road, and suggested that spandrel panels be used either in combination with the block or another security feature in order to maintain the appearance of the windows. Parking is computed at a ratio of one per 150, requiring a total of 10 parking spaces. Parking would not be impacted by the addition, and according to the aerial parking onsite is, there is 10 spaces available, so it would meet with, meet the ordinance's minimum requirement. There is a requirement, too, for a screen wall along the north side of the property where it borders Land Zone Residential. There is an existing masonry screen wall that runs along the entire length of the north property line. An enclosed dumpster is shown behind the building, adjacent to that wall. There are no other site improvements planned with this proposal. The parking lot layout, the landscaped areas, and the single driveway off of Fosh would all remain as is. This building would be allowed, one wall sign not to exceed one square feet for each foot of building front edge, allowed two, would be a ground sign, 30 square feet and 6 feet in height. The existing ground sign is not conforming in size and should be removed. And with that, Mr. Chairman, can read out the correspondence?
Yes, please.
First is from the Engineering Division, dated October 3rd. That reads, "The existing parcel is currently served by Public Water Main, Sanitary Sewer, and Storm Sewer, and the proposed project does not indicate any alterations to those services, so we do not believe there will be any impacts to the existing systems. Should the service leads need to be revised, the owner will need to submit drawings to this department to determine if permits will be required. Also, should any work be required within the Five Mile Road right of way, the owner will need to obtain permits with the Wayne County Department of Public Services." That letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next is a letter of no objection coming from the Livonia Fire and Rescue Division, dated October 4th, and signed by Brian Kukla, Fire Marshal. A similar letter of no objection from the Division of Police, dated October 4th, and signed by Sergeant Chapansky of the Traffic Bureau. Next is a letter from the Inspection Department, dated October 18th, that reads, "Pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed, and the following is noted: Work began on this project without permits or inspections. If this project moves forward, permit applications, along with required plans, will need to be submitted and approved before work can commence. This department has no further objections to this petition." That is signed by Jerome Anna, Director of Inspection. And the last two are letters of no objection, one coming from the Department of Finance, the other one coming from the Office of the Treasurer, dated October 7th and October 11th, respectively, and signed by County Complula Chief Accountant and Linda Shield, Treasurer of the City. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Any questions for our planning staff? I don't see any. Our petitioner, I believe, is in the audience. Feel free to come forward. And we'll ask that you start with your name and address.
John Millerani. Home address is 31492 Norfolk, and it's 48152 Livonia.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Millerani. What would you like to tell us about your business?
I'm here to answer your questions. I wasn't aware of the meeting last week, so I, all my letters said that this was supposed to be the first meeting, so I, Scott Miller had called me on Wednesday and told me there was some issues that were about the front windows, and he suggested using a shed well. And I went online, I looked up for putting glass in front of block. Everybody told me there are vent systems in there, but they're going to condensate, and you're going to get dirt and spiders in there. So, my alternative was to put glass block up, and I could put steel bars inside the building. So, the front of the building will have glass block. You won't see any of the security bars behind them.
Okay.
So, the security system, I had the FBI, the state police, and the Livonia Police Department look at the building. They told me if they're going to come in, they're going to come in from the roof in the back of the building. Through our alarm system, we have sensors put on all the choices, so as soon as somebody steps on the roof, they set the alarm off. There are video cameras all around the perimeter. We even take care of the building next door, looking at their roof, thinking that they'll come through our attic vent with a, put a one by six, or two by six across there and walk it, walk, you know, kick the, kick it in, you get into the attic. Once they do that, they'll hit up motion sensors. So, we're very secure for what we have planned to do there, so.
Okay. And I take it in regards to your security, that your inventory will be in safes or locked away?
Yes, everything will be in safes. As, as it goes, we're going to be building our own inventory. We'll be assembling firearms in the back and altering gunsmiths for other shops. Inventory is very hard to get today if you're starting from scratch. They just, they got so many other orders that they got to deal with, so we have to be on the waiting list probably for five years before we can get a retail shop opened up where we could have people come in. Right now, it's by appointment only, and I do a lot of internet sales.
Okay. All right, great. Let's see if there's any questions for you. Mr. Bonjero.
So, just going back to the working without a permit, I, I know that you, I think that you pulled a permit for some minor repairs and mods on the inside.
We, we got a hold of the building department last year after we purchased the building on the 27th of August. The ordinance officer came out and says we had to clean up all the landscaping all around the building. So, we had to put a slab in the back of the building to get machinery into the building. When we dug out this, for the slab, we hit water. So, I had to dig down about a foot and a half, and filled it full of stone. And then we says, well, we're going to have an addition that's going to go back here. I gave prints to Randy Abraham, and he kind of like blew me off. So, I told him, I said, I got to get concrete poured here because we got a hole dug. And he says, just go ahead and start, you know, it's wrong to start it, but I, I took it upon myself to dig the foundations, get it poured before we lost everything. We have swamp muck there because I took in all the water from the building next door.
But you did pull a permit for the inside.
Yes, we have a, we have a building permit for painting walls and pulling carpeting.
So, there would be inspections onsite, and at some point...
No inspections were required on our building permit because we're not doing nothing structurally on the inside, except replacing drywall holes. It's, the building's 40 years old.
So, so you just didn't, you didn't understand you need a site plan, permits?
Yeah, I, I submitted a set of prints, and after I submitted them, he says, well, this has to have, to be certified by an art detect. Took me 10 months to get a print out of an art detect because his parents died during COVID, and I'm being a nice guy, not pushing anybody. So, I am going to pay double the permit fines and everything. I've have a certified letter that we sent in, I got 40 pictures of the foundation. We're down 48 inches. We got 5'8" rerod going around the foundations. We got highway-grade rebar into the slab, which is 6 inches. It's six-bag mix with fiberglass in it. Same thing with the foundations, we're five-bag mix with fiberglass in it. We're well over minimum code because I own the building. That's the most important thing is the foundation. So, we, we can dig, we can dig a hole next to the foundation. I don't have a problem proving that out to anybody.
I think it's a good, something that looks like you certainly need, just, I think food for thought next time, you know?
I, I understand that. I understand that.
There's a pretty good chance with no permit, you're going to get caught, or somebody, the neighbors are going to call.
I, I understand that. We, we...
And if somebody's licensed, doing the work, they should have no issue getting a permit.
Yep. Well, like I said, we, we had to submit prints. It became a bigger project than what I thought it was going to be. I thought they would take my art detect prints and turn it into something, and it said he had to have it certified.
I mean, it's just more headaches for you, just going forward. I, I wouldn't do it.
Yep. I understand. This is my last building. I'm 62 now. I don't plan on opening up another business. This is my fifth building. I'm tired of starting businesses and selling them, so.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Any other questions for our petitioner? Mr. Denaro.
So, do you currently own an armory, or is this...
We, Plymouth Armory was a registered name 20 years ago. We started off in the city of Plymouth with a smaller building. We moved into Livonia in 2011, and it was a 7,200 square foot building, and they started a grow house next to the building I had on Industrial Road. So, at 2:00 in the morning, I had people walking into my building trying to buy weed from me. So, my lawyer advised me to move. So, we sold the business off in 2020, just before the pandemic hit, and we retired, basically, and I got tired of sitting around, so I decided to do this again. But yeah, we've, we've been building gun parts for the last 25 years. I was in business for 35 years. I just decided to turn it into a full-time business now.
And then, you said you've, you've talked to the FBI, you've talked to...
Yes, going through, when you have an ATF license, you have every bureau of the government crawling up your behind, basically, and you have to answer a million questions, and they call you in the middle of the night to catch you off guard and everything else for what you're going to be doing.
And your hours of operation?
Will be 9:00 in the morning until 5:00 at night, but it's by appointment only, basically, so they have to make an appointment to come into the building.
Got it. Can you walk me, can you walk me through that? So, if I need, you said repairing guns?
I build special guns for target shooting, for competition shooting and stuff. So, you know, the $4,000 gun, so it takes me six to eight weeks to put a gun together, and the person comes in, tells me what they want, then I don't see them until the gun's ready to be delivered.
Okay.
We meet at a range, we shoot them, if they like them, then we proceed with the, with the purchase. So, we're not like your gun shop on Center Mass or something like that, where you have people coming and going all day long.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Denaro. Ms. Smiley, did you have some additional questions?
I think she covered it. Thank you.
Any other questions from any of our other commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Toramina.
If I may, just a question regarding the sign. What's your intention for...
There, there is a sign in front of the building. It's, was Clark and Fromm Real Estate, and that sign's way bigger than what I need. I was told I was grandfathered in. When we had the building inspected before we purchased it, he told me I could use that sign, and I told him I'm really not concerned about signs right now. When I'm ready to put my name on it, I'll, I'll have to find out exactly what the ordinance is saying, but I was told we have 30 square feet that we're allowed to, for the maximum sign, and that's probably twice bigger than what I need. So, I'll probably keep the sign where it's at. I'll just make it smaller.
So, you would, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Right, Mr. Chair.
But I have to find out what the ordinance is for the heist and the whis, you know, for what's required, because we are on Five Mile.
Yeah, and you're correct. It's, it's, 6 feet is the limit on the height and 30 square feet. So, if I understand you correctly, you would shrink the size of that sign to what the ordinance allows.
Right. It's, it's, it's real close to being 30 square feet now. Just it's bigger than what I need. I don't want to advertise what I'm doing there that big.
All right. Okay.
And we have, we, we just had a new parking lot put in where it was lowered 6 inches so we could get rid of the water problems that we had.
Oh, excellent. Okay, good. Any other questions from any of our commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karen Magna.
So, the, the weapons that you build, are they only target weapons, or are you...
Well, we will build like AR-15s. They're custom, they'll be custom-built, one of the onesies, out of parts, and then I'll alter to what they want done to them, if they wanted scopes mounted on them, suppressors and whatever. I, I don't have a license to manufacture a frame. Anything that has a serial number on it, we have to have a manufacturing license for it. So, we'll be buying those parts, and the parts that I build are just phenomenal parts that just fit on them. So, they're custom pieces.
All, all custom weapons?
Yes, basically.
How about, how about, there'd be no shooting, there's no target range?
No.
Short or nothing? How about...
I tried to buy the building next door to me, but a veterinarian made a better deal on it, so that's, I was going to try to put a range in, but that didn't happen.
How about ammunition?
As of right now, probably not. You can't get, for one thing, you can't get it.
Okay, so there'd be no ammunition sales?
It would be more of a retail end of it, and that's not an option right now to have a retail store for a new place opening up unless you have connections.
Okay, and how many people might work at this, at your location?
Basically, me and possibly one other person.
Okay. Thank you.
Primarily me. I'm it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Karen Magna. Any other questions for our petitioner? Anyone in our audience wishing to speak for or against? Don't see anybody coming forward. Anything else you'd like to add before we make our decision?
Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, and we'll see what the decision is. If there's no further questions, I will go to our commission for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bonjero.
I'd like to offer an approving resolution that the request to construct in addition to the existing building at 13980 Farmington Road is hereby approved, subject to city council approval, and the following conditions. One, the site plan identified as sheet number SP-1 dated October 11, 2022, prepared by Brian Wiggins Architect, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number two, the exterior building elevation plans identified as sheet A3 and sheet A4, both dated September 26, 2022, prepared by Brian Wiggins Architect, are hereby approved and shall be adhered to, except that the window openings on the south side of the building, if infilled with masonry, shall be concealed using spandrel, window panels, or similar product that gives the appearance of windows. One point to that, I think the petitioner was saying glass block?
Glass block, yeah.
That's my alternative to it. They were, they were going to stay clean.
Is that going to be like an obscured, or, Mark, what do you want to do with that?
Glass block and bars.
Yeah, I think we should specify if it's going to be glass, glass block or spandrel.
Glass block or spandrel.
Yeah, I would specify that we say that glass block is permitted, if that's, if we're okay with that.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Number three, that the exterior finish of the addition shall be complimentary to the existing brick on the building. Four, any new exterior light fixture shall not exceed 20 feet in height, and shall be aimed and shielded so as to minimize stray light trespassing across property lines and glaring into adjacent roadways. Five, that the three walls of the trash dumpster area shall be constructed out of building materials that shall complement that of the building. The enclosure gate shall be of solid panel steel construction or durable, long-lasting solid panel fiberglass. Number six, that the existing non-conforming monument sign shall be removed, and only conforming signage is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Seven, the specific plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the inspection department at the time of the building permits are applied for, and number eight, pursuant to section 13, point 13 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by city council, and unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
All right. Is there support? Support. All right. We have a motion made by Mr. Bonjero, supported by Mr. Long to approve. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Can I just make a correction for the record? The address on, just, the, the correct address is 27492 Five Mile Road.
That's a good point. Thank you, Mr. Denaro. We did have a typo in our, our alert packet there. So, if there's any alert comments, if there's no other comments on the motion to approve, then if the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Bonjero.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mrs. Smiley.
Aye.
Mrs. Denaro.
Aye.
Karen Magna votes aye. Chair Wulsho.
Votes aye. Motion passes, and we'll go to city council with an approving recommendation. Thank you for coming in, and we wish you luck.
Thank you, sir.
And that leaves us with one item left on our agenda, Mr. Secretary.